... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda today is the public services. Do you have any questions?
Good morning.
Well, there's only one item on the agenda, and that is the budget resolution. Twenty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars for stock investment grants. You've got to move in corporation.
Motion to that next please. Yes, Mr. Mary Lou. Second. Mr. Murray Lou, please. Any discussion or clarifications as regards to this?
This is grants for the regular bonus upon a grant or...
So it's federally coming assessment.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Anything else today, Mr. Murray Lou?
No, thank you.
Okay, you are dismissed.
Federal House.
Good morning. I have an update today on the register nurse position. Most, if not all of you who were here on April fourth for full board and approved the new civil service position at that time, and so there's been an adjustment in the salary fringe for that position. And what happened was that when I made the plans for this register nurse position, I went to the contract, in the back of the contract, there's a chart in there that lists all the civil service positions. So I located the register nurse position and it was as a grade eleven position at, and that salary came out to be the sixty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars salary fringe for a year. Then after this was approved on the fourth, I submitted my request to fill for the new position and I got a call back from the personnel department who said, well, that position doesn't exist. You need to go further back in the chart to an ungraded position. And that is now the R N position. So, of course, that position is adding a higher salary than what I had originally found. So therefore, that month, the total cost of that position from the sixty-four thousand to about eight thousand, as you can see on the sheet, now that it passed out. The bottom line is, there's difference of about fifteen thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars, but that will be offset by the projected bill of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars in the year one and would increase in that cost of that. It would increase in year two, the projected bill of revenue. And the board supervisor approval is contingent upon a net zero cost from beyond two years of the back plan. And cost analysis of the position will go off to the finance committee next year when we're preparing for the 2018 budget.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Yes, Mr. Mary Lou.
So, essentially, when you went in and you said, positions that you were going to fill at forty-six, at sixty-four thousand, doesn't exist. You have to find another position in the system?
Well, it's a register nurse, but now it's been re, at some point was reclassified. So it went from being the grade eleven to an ungraded position at a higher salary, but the old grade is still in the contract.
In which, which contract is the one for our American?
The, the, you mean the contract to the company in the union?
Okay.
Uh, I mean...
Here's, here's what happened. The grade eleven was not removed from the contract. It was a high ball. In other words, when we read into contract, we took that removed, that grade eleven from the R N position. Because what happened was that about two years before we sold the nursing home for three, we had an awful lot of trouble recruiting for R N nurses. We weren't able to get any. So the board decided that that's time to take the R N position and reclassify it to an ungraded position that pays at a higher rate so that we can compete for the recruitment of nurses at that time. So that's when the salary for the R N nurses changed, for recruitment purposes and force and I, public health, wherever else we have to need them. The purpose was to change that. The fact that it got failed to give them when the contract is incredible, but it's not unusual. We come through that contract and we do it. We try to pick up what we may have changed during the course of the contract period and we try to remove them as best we can, but sometimes we do this. So that's really where this issue came about was, Steve looked at the contract, said grade eleven, he assumed that was the rate, and in fact, the rate had been changed for recruitment purposes to a higher.
So you think we will, I mean, at the sixty-four thousand dollar level, we wouldn't have a problem recruiting the R N, or the eighty thousand dollar, better than the second part of my question, is, is, are we congruent across all the organs with R N positions?
Yeah.
So as I interpret this, you originally anticipated that the cost would be offset one hundred percent and that we would have had approximately forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars in revenue. But now, we're, the revenue, the cost will be offset, but the revenue is not forty-eight thousand, it's fifteen thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars less. So there's still a net revenue of forty-two thousand something. Or thirty-two thousand, not very much. Thirty-two thousand. Okay, thank you.
Just want to verify, so the salary's not even thousand. The salary's forty-six thousand. And I can remember when we were trying to recruit, like Dan said, for the thirty-seven thousand, we were trying to recruit R Ns back three, four years ago. They were leaving our county and going other places with double that salary. Still at forty-six thousand, that's not that much for a good R N. So that's the reason why it occurs.
The, the real change here is that when Steve came to you originally, he was positive he would be able to cover the position for two years as a gray. He's not positive now because of the difference in price. So what we talked about was by the time, because of where we're getting started here anyways, we're gonna have to look at this in the 2018 budget. So instead of him coming back two, two years later and saying, you know, the grant money's gone and I take in this much revenue, he's gonna have to come to you earlier and say, the grant money's gone and I take it in this much revenue. So in other words, he's gonna have to prove that the position pays for itself earlier than two years. He's gonna have to do it about a year and a half.
Mr. Murray Lou, now, so, I mean, questions will be asked, what happens today, is it gonna be a net revenue? And you can say it.
There will definitely be a net gain to revenue for twenty-four months. So this, that award will take us through mid-2018. And then obviously, while this person is on this salary, they're gonna be generating bill value. And that's the, the forty-eight thousand minus, minus fifteen, which we end up at about thirty-two, probably more by the end of two years. The idea is that by the end of those two years, this position should really have revenue to cover its, its full extent. And if not, well, that's gonna be an issue that we'll, we'll talk about in the finance heavily for you.
That was a question I was gonna say. I mean, is the board, the board will be able to, under two years, I'd like the individual to understand that the revenue's not there, your job will not exist.
That's the way the job is being, uh, planned and advertised.
All right, thanks.
Any, are there further concerns for Mr. Murray Lou?
Thank you.
Want my help? If there's anything that you've been busy with...
I have been busy.
...
I have been busy. I'm actually, you know, very very happy to tell you, I'm gonna ask you to accept money and a pretty good portion of it. So I'm really thrilled to say that, as this kind of public health department applied for the New York State Health Foundation Grant, we approved, we applied for it just prior to Thanksgiving. They denied it and said, no, we don't think that that's a good idea. And the day after Thanksgiving, not only did they approve it, they gave me fifteen thousand dollars more than what I asked for. And it is to provide a coordinated response to the opioid epidemic in the North Country. So it's for our organization called ECHO, which stands for Essex County Health and Opioid Coalition. Everybody out there has a partner with me on that, myself and Chris, right, the district determined co-chairs of it. Public Health Department is the foundation of it. So we were awarded the grant, so I have a resolution to accept sixty thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and three cents of money to this county for that. And then I just read my other resolution, part of the grant was to provide a higher percentage, thirty-sixty percent STE, that's our reason we did it, because that's exactly what the grant would pay for. And to answer your question, this position completely covers my grant, fruits, salaries, everything. And the position is for two years and it's being posted that way because after the two years of this funding lease, as does the job. But we hope to have two years of a person moving this coalition forward and a lot of the initiatives from the police department, from public health, from mental health, to D S F, to all partners in this, that will lead to significant changes. So my first resolution is to increase, I just got this, increase appropriations for sixty thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars.
Resolution to that effect, please. Mr. Mary Lou, second. Mr. Mary Lou, any questions or concerns regarding this? They're being, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
The second part of that resolution was, I think, any of the resolution to hire fully funded, you present to the average coordinator for the New York State Health Foundation Grant, to carry out coordinator response to the opioid epidemic for the grant period of two years.
Mr. Murray Lou, second. Mr. Levy, any questions or concerns and make actions of this?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Scott, I heard you said sixty percent, sixty percent.
That full time, so thirty-seven, thirty-five hours divided by sixty percent. I did it exactly to what I got it for. So the position's gonna post about three, seven hours.
It's not hold my position into sixty percent.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, next.
So I just learned last week, I've been significantly engaged in what's called a zither, which is the Medicaid redesign for Essex County. The zisrip, I sit on several committees, including the steering committee, and the zisrip has awarded Essex County Health Department twenty thousand dollars in engagement funds for a role in being active on the zisrip. So it's twenty thousand dollars. So they're giving it to us for being engaged in the, in participating in the organization. So I have a grant to accept twenty thousand dollars into the budget.
The mouse has said something too.
No, I'm sorry, it's a different thing. I just, for that's a different thing. This is twenty thousand dollars for zisrip fund and you don't have to, because I just got the, you know, on Friday, they already got the check. So I follow that.
Not on your desk.
You don't have it on your desk. It just came out of the press and the check's in the mail. So again, it's twenty thousand dollars for nothing, it's already for engagement that I've done and organizational, I've done sitting on the committees. I have a whole form on it, how it went out. So you're actually, I'm not among thirty-nine partners in Essex County, I'm gonna throw out the zisrip reason, we did that twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to endorse this resolution, Mr. Levy, second by Mr. Mary Lou. Any further questions or concerns?
Yes. Dan, we're in R N, Paul Star, at Warren County, Warren County legislature, just go hall two, I don't know how we have the power to do that, but anyway, he's gonna hall any, any grants. In other words, he wasn't gonna spend out of the county budget until such time those grants were actually received and he went back through and found that there's a number of grants out there with Warren County Board that passed resolutions, they funded these things, and they're still waiting on their money. Some of them went back as far as two thousand seven or eight, I believe. So my question is, will you stay up on that? Will you stay on that? Well, we'll, we'll keep track of the accounts and whether they come in or not, but we can, we can certainly look, make sure, I'll, I'll check you four ways and make sure that they are coming in and if they're not. They do come in late. I mean, we, you see that us doing that on a regular basis will real change from one fiscal year to the other in terms of the state budget as compared to ours, and it will ask for an additional resolution to carry that money forward. But typically, the state is slow about paying. There is no question, that's typical.
This, this one, this is, you know, county law, and I guess they went into it and found that there's a lot of money out there that's promised and never received.
Well, truthfully, the biggest area that that person is in, you guys know, it's been a long time to get you, we still got projects hanging out that have not been done. But these kinds of grants, these typically do come in within the fiscal years that they're planning. Either they fall directly after the April deadline or they fall sometimes before, but typically, these department grants could come in fairly well.
All those in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
So the next resolution I have is to accept grant funds for Adlon Health Institute for seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and force that. So I should tell you that the zisrip is paying for workforce development, so classes that we might have traditionally funded in the county. So this happened to be for lactation specialists, which is a billable service. We were scheduled to go there, but I realized that the workforce development would reimburse for that, so I submitted to board that I had already paid for to the zisrip and they reimbursed the county for seven hundred and seventy-two dollars of that. So again, it's money we were, it's hard to spend, it was in my budget to do this training, but I was able to recoup some money from the zisrip because other people are, all around us, people are using it trying to increase our workforce knowledge, so I took the opportunity to put in something we had to.
Mr. Levy's endorsing this resolution, the second. Mr. Mary Lou, any further questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, next.
To move money, so this, those exactly to what Dan was saying, this is the extra breaks that don't follow typical current fiscal years. And so I need to move funding forward that was left behind in 2015 budget. And honestly, you know that I'm sure they changed fiscally and we just missed this. So we realized that we lost money in the 15 budget. This is money that was ours that we didn't expend, so we're moving it forward to 2015 so we can spend it. One is for the ironical health network, it's for eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty cents.
A resolution by Mr. Scott Spava, the second. Mr. Mary Lou, any questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
The second resolution is exactly the same, is moving 2015 funds forward into 2016, increase appropriations from, to seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. There's a long walk in this money here and there of a broad range that we need to move forward. And again, I don't know whether it'll come in January, February, but we're just catching up and getting our ducks in a row from the fiscal January, we're even asking too. So the fact of that resolution is more...
The resolution to this effect, motion by Mr. Levy, the second. By Mr. Scott Spava. Any questions or concerns?
I know, I mean, you've got down on your request that it's amending resolution number eighty-three of April fourth. If it's amending that same resolution for both of these, then we need to, let's put them both together. So we're gonna amend resolution number eighty-three of two thousand and sixteen, which has an amount listed at four thousand, ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents, and thirty thousand, ninety-four. So those two amounts will change to seven thousand to twenty-seven, and thirty-three thousand, ninety-eight. So it's really an update to the numbers that were previously approved. You're, what you're doing is amending that resolution number eighty-three to correct those numbers.
Endorsed by the district committee, it's Mr. Scott Spava, you agree to that? Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
And the last resolution I have is to amend resolution, I'm sorry, this is a, this is a, this is a, this is a, maybe to amend, just put them all together. We're from our own master, we want you to come in exactly as we thought. So, and thus...
Okay. Good job, I would say. Mr. Scott Spava, you have questions for her?
Yeah, what, healthy places, food.
Creating healthy places to grant.
There's no more grants left.
Well, now we've created healthy schools in communities, but it's earmarked as specific schools, so it's Ty Hunter Road, Elizabeth Town Road, Central School, and Crown Point. So those schools were strictly hired for our charities. So if you're in those towns, you should be seeing her around. As a grant, we shared with Clinton Howie, they held a grant and we now have to do them. So we are working in those school districts and those communities somewhere to increase access to healthy foods, increase gym, reduce obesity, in those kind of places. It's specific to those two districts. Whereas it's creating healthy places where we touch that, we catch a bit too.
All right, so that's all.
It is all.
Any other questions?
Uh, I was gonna do it with OFA. Okay.
Next on the agenda is office for the aging.
So this is somewhat of a new change. Chrissy and I are from up here together. Judy called us earlier this morning, the resolution that you weren't aware of, but it's because it was a van that had an accident, OFA nutrition site, the van was considered totaled, it was an older van, a thousand miles, nobody was hurt, and it was not a story of a great day. So the insurance company wants to give us four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents. So the resolution before you is we accept the four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents for the totaled van, and that money will be put towards auto equipment and in that exact amount, offset the price of another van. That's what I'm thinking about.
Motion by Mr. Scott Spava, second by Mr. Mary Lou. Any questions or concerns regarding this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
I abstain, Mr. Harry.
You abstain. Mr. Monty abstained. Any other concerns for the office of the agent?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where are we regards to putting office for the aging under public health, under that umbrella that's at? Done, if you still wait for an answer, say.
Well, we're, we had the answer from the Department House, they approved the merger. We are now working on the request to the New York State Office for Aging, which is the, the, the final step to that process. Lynn and I and Chrissy are working on a report that we will give to the board detailing extra consolidation and how it's gonna work. Once that's done, we will schedule a public hearing where anybody who wants to provide input will be allowed to do so, and then we'll submit a plan for, to New York State Office to be provided.
So I would more prior to the hearing, I would list all the see pros and cons of this merger, and ask why we feel it's beneficial for the aging population to do this.
All right, that's fair.
Thank you. I'm getting a lot of questions, Doc.
Well, you are, and I understand that, you know. The one thing I think you know is I'm pretty thorough about how we do things. I'm not gonna put out any report that doesn't cover every aspect of what we're talking about. My intent is that when that document goes out, it will be readily available to anybody who wants it or anybody who needs it. And I think once you see what the requirements are and what the, what our options are under that, that work well within what we, this, the required by the state, and we expect that it will be approved, it has been approved by New York State Department of Health. The interesting thing about the New York State Department of Health approval is that it essentially lays out the same requirement that the New York State Office for Aging requirement is. And that requirement is that if we're gonna bring something into Department of Public Health, that that has to be separate thing. And any financing that goes with it or any services that are provided has to be clearly defined between the two units that are contained within public health. That was approved by New York State Department of Public Health as being the case. The same requirement is, is required under the Office for the Aging. If in fact, you're gonna combine them with another department, you have to be able to demonstrate that they are separate in this thing and that the services provided to aging people are in fact provided separately in our accounting for that.
So I guess, I know you're gonna have all the reports, why, why is this happening? I mean, that's the question now, there's a lot, why, all these years we've had an office for the aging, it's up to the prior back. Why now would it have to fall under the umbrella of public health?
Because again, it's like when we, when we talk about this at budget time, anytime, I don't care what department it's in, if you have an opportunity to consolidate and deliver the same services for less cost, I think we have an obligation to that.
But we also have an obligation to our aging population.
Absolutely. And I do not in any ways perceive that the services award, the, that being provided to the aging will change in any way. I don't think anybody, for all practical purposes, we've been consolidated departments since January more, I don't think there's anybody within the aging population that can say that their services have been decreased under that proposal. In fact, I think that probably the services have increased during that period from January to now.
Any further concerns regarding the office of the aging? They're being asked. Our next is transportation. And should people are aware, there's been a bounty of issues regarding Medicaid transportation. This is causing expenses that are truly unrealistic. With the expertise of both Nancy Google, our transportation coordinator, and also with the assistance of Ellen Jones, the CEO of ADAP, perhaps, and I say perhaps, a plan then to be developed and investigated to deal with these concerns. With that, having that said, Nancy, would you add a further review as to what the situation is? And then Ellen will come up and we would have a discussion. We've got... And then, uh, Alan will come up, and we will have a discussion with your sources.
Well, the bus service in our, the ride is normal, we are doing more helping along the bus. And I believe, um, what we'll discuss with Alan is his, uh, start program, like, let him have kind of a start program. They have volunteers, they provide rides, um, they're kind of having to, I believe, they're B A cap, and they will pay them, minus twelve. They also, um, receive an income from mine.
Alan, would you come up and add further, uh, this certainly is something that we need to explore. And, uh, without a plan, so that everyone understands what the situation is.
Good morning, everybody, of course, right now, I apologize for that, my name is Alan Jones, the executive director of Atlanic Media Action Programs, for those of you who are network or lead, I'm releasing myself. Thank you for giving this opportunity to come speak to you today. Um, I've handed out, or a piece of paper's been handed out, we are looking at the potential to provide volunteer services, for the volunteer services for Medicaid transport. I also have with me today Marge Garcia, with our development coordinator at A C A, and she will be a person, if we do proceed with this, will be the person that will head up this operation. Uh, we have yet to get more approval from our board, we're in discussion with them. Um, we're also looking at contracting, that contracted big approval from, um, public health, to get, not public health, but Medicaid, to get, uh, approved to be Medicaid transport provider, and we're looking at application processes this week. But basically, what we're looking to do is a very successful program in Clinton County, they're J C E L, and we're looking to duplicate that program. They have that with J C E L, and they're looking to share all their procedures and processes, and we would replicate that here, where we would, uh, hopefully get a pool of volunteers for each township, and we would work with those volunteers to reimburse them all their expenses, and they would assist in reducing, reducing the cost of the county obviously through our program. I can answer any questions to you, yeah?
Mr. Scott Spalva.
It's my understanding, I'm talking to the board, it's quite a kind of, um, big part of this whole problem is that the clients are picking and choosing who they want for, for cats. So if he gets called, and we gotta pick up so and so for a medical appointment, he gets there and they say, no, we don't want you. They can't take the appointment, they can't go the other way. So, that's a huge part of the problem. So, if we get into, if you get into this, how does that, obviously, they have a right to choose, although I don't think they should have had it. Whereas the county suspends the venture medical appointment, and that's the kind of thing you need to do. So, how do we get around that, or, or over that, or?
Well, we would be contacted with M A S, and my understanding from conversations that I've had so far is that they would assign individuals to us to take transport that day, and that would be the choice, they, they wouldn't get a choice, but maybe I'm correct.
Well, that's, Nancy, you understand that's a big part of the problem, also, and Randy, I know you have it, it's supposed to be people that they are picking whom they want for, for cats. Including one driver that was, um, supposed to be under key washers, I'm driving a cat.
I don't know about that, but yes, for the most part, they all do get to pick who they want to go with, and if you look at any of the cat company cards, you flip it over, there's instructions on how to, and how they can help you. Well, um, medical answering service is making small steps in progress with, if they're going to hotspur, when we're going, their choices to ride with us or not, Gary, or cat. It's kind of small process. The problem I have seen for all of it is, I believe, John may have issues with his drivers, we have issues with our drivers, A C A's gonna have the same issues. We get what rides M A S gives us. John, we have a person going to one two three, we have a person going to one two four, and A C A has a person going to one two five, there's no group of rides from the N A S process. And I would like to promote, Jenny asks for the state, or whoever, if we got a dump, whether it be A C A that contacted us, or the S S, or whoever, got a dump of all the rides, farming mail, what we used to, to the D S S employees, buses, and A C A, and then whatever we, we could not do, went back to M A S, and they got cats. I don't know if that would, probably a lung shot, but it would be the most effective way to get more people to the same place for less cost. They're all in more partnerships.
Mr. Moore.
After that conversation last week, and I discussed, I heard the same thing with Tom, so I couldn't believe this was happening. If I'm paying out of my pocket, my hard earned dollars, I've got a right to choose. Taxpayers are paying to send the cat there, somebody to bring them for taxidermy dollars, they should have a right to choose. That should be gone, Alan, like, I don't care what anybody says, there should be no right to choose from that instance. In fact, I lost the taxpayers more money to send another cat out.
All right. John, the public, what is, D O H and the state office, I think.
Mr. O'Deere.
Thank you. Uh, no, my understanding is definitely people cannot say, I don't want this cat, I want another cat. I think the other side of that, I don't know what, to what extent that's really happening legally, they can't do that. The, the other, the opposite way of looking at that is that there's some, there's so much questionable activity going on with some rogue taxi companies, that people are, we're getting reports of people being afraid to go, and say, I'm not going. So, there's that side of it, too, we're trying to clean that up, that part of it, mostly.
Thank you, John. Let's, Mr. Hillman.
One more question, Alan, I need, um, who's, who's covering the insurance for your volunteer drivers?
Well, we would, we would contact our insurance provider, we get overall, for all coverage on the program, as we do with all our programs. We would reimburse expenses for the individuals, so it's their vehicle insurance that would be parent first. We would have coverage over and above that.
All right, thanks. Any further questions or concerns?
Just.
Mr. Samaria.
Well, Mr. Harry, are we in, in the process of taking back the Medicaid business that we've been talking about?
I think what we're talking about here is participating, I think that's part of the reason, you know, I mean, maximum, we used to do it, I mean, we did do, we chose women, hair, and what, and, you know, we ran the program for around eight hundred thousand. Now it's running at just one six million, and the state is the one deciding who rides and who doesn't ride. Um, you know, I think what, what we're trying to do here, at least it sounds like me, is we're trying to provide local alternatives, um, to the rides, which would in fact reduce the Medicaid cost. It's not gonna have a direct impact on our budget, so to speak, you know, again, our Medicaid costs are, the way it is currently, is capped at a certain amount, and we don't pay any more than that in the course of the year. However, when you see it go on statewide, you know clearly that there's a problem, if the cost is so much higher now.
I guess, um, Alan, one of the questions I have is, is the concept here, isn't that you would have vehicles, but rather that people would use their own vehicles?
That's correct, we're looking to build a pool of volunteers with their own vehicles. And we would have expectations of our customer service as well, so we're hoping that improving customer service, and making sure we hold them accountable, being on time, that provider, try to provide the participants, those that need the service, will migrate towards our services.
Mr. Scott Spalva, kind of volunteer, that sort of would be reimbursed, something to mileage or whatever.
That's correct, mileage, and there's somewhere also talking about if they have to go for an extended period of time, we could potentially reimburse vehicles as well.
Samaria, like, most people have, they would suggest you put that number, you know, on the website, or in the paper, even in our local paper, I know it's advertisements with the state number, and then the request, to request whatever, A C A, or whatever it is. But that is surprising to me, that they are actually advertising locally for that, and, and requesting their specific name he mentioned, so that they can say, that's my call. So I think that's a good idea for us to make that number more available to people.
Okay. And, you know, the other thing, too, is we wanna partner with all the other providers that are currently out there. Uh, we're not here to take over anything, we're here to partner, we're the better one to make sure we're providing the best service possible.
Any further concerns? I beg you, for, that you're promoting this discussion, it's certainly something that needs to be addressed. There have been, uh, taxi services that have been taking advantage of loopholes that they have found, and it has been an unrealistic expense to taxpayers. So, uh, hopefully, uh, new people will stay in communication with one another, and come up with a definitive plan at the board, and, and. Thank you very much, it'll be an ongoing process.
One question, Nancy.
Yes.
Nancy, um, a couple of months ago, we had a meeting in Lake Placid, and Dan, and myself, and Dan, so, of course. That's, the, the village of Lake Placid, at that time, I understand, would provide information, financial information, so, to Dan, or to yourself. And Dan was supposed to get some kind of information. I understand that has not happened, is that correct?
Correct.
Have you followed up on that?
I've talked to the mayor several times about it, and, and talked to the treasurer a couple of times, well, the treasurer wanted to, like, have the board move a resolution, and then say that it was gonna happen, but the mayor didn't wanna do that, I mean, it's a village.
Well, I've got one other question that Dan, Paul, or Ash had to do with the, the cost. And there was an agreement made, I believe, verbal agreement at that meeting, that that information would be provided.
Correct.
And as I see it, I don't know how we can go any forward, or move forward with it unless we have the information, so I would appreciate it if you follow up and, and tell, uh, tell, uh, Mr. Ellis, we can't move forward unless we have the information that was requested.
I agree, and I, I have asked him for it, but I don't know what the reason was, my, I didn't get it.
I just saw him call for the price, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further concerns for transportation? That being noted, the city is now adjourned.
Yes, Mr. Harrington, uh, one thing I was, when we changed the salaries for Mr. Valles, a registered nurse, and we have reservations to do that, and that. No, essentially, you, you authorized the cashier of the brand, um, the board of position. Um, he had hoped that that change would last two years, it's not going to. So what I said to him was, like, I can authorize your position, you're gonna have to go back and inform the board that you're not gonna get three years out of that, that you're gonna have to come back to the board after a year and a half, for approval. The board has already, um, previously approved what you pay in our end, so that becomes part of the, you know, if, if, if you ask for the error in what you're gonna actually pay in the board if it's part of it.